We invite all who would care to join us in standing with the recitation of the Lord's Prayer, followed by a moment of silence. Our Father,
who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And may this not be temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
It is now seven o'clock. Shelby City Council needs call to order. Please join me in the recitation of the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you see it, please? Call please Mr. Graham.
Mr. Robb, here. Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Gates?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. McGlocklin, here.
I would now entertain a motion to dispense of the reading of the journal from September 6th, 2022.
So, second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robb and second by Mr. Martin to dispense of the reading of the journal from September 6th, 2022. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yes.
Mr. Robb?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
And motion passes. We now come to the time for public comment. If anyone has any public comment they would like to make before council, they may come to the podium, state your name and address, and make your comments, or reserve time for a piece of legislation that will appear on the agenda later. Now is the time for public comment. Hearing the unseated, we'll move on to reports from standing and special committees. Did you want to do public comment, ma'am?
I'm sorry?
Did you want to participate in the public comment?
Did I want to make a comment?
Did you want to make a public address to council or anything? I just-
In other words, did I come here for a reason?
Yes. You'd-
I did.
So you want to make a comment?
Probably.
Well, now would be the time. Now would be the time. If you'd be surprised to state your name and add, come to the podium,
Okay.
and just state your name and address, and then you make your comments to council.
Okay. My name is Marty Remington. And first of all, I put new batteries in my hair-
Your address, please.
Pardon?
Your address, please.
My address is 67 Samantha Drive. And, uh... Before I came, I put new batteries in my hair aids and then forgot to wear them. So that's why I keep saying "huh". And I apologize for that. And that's why I couldn't hear what you said. But anyway, my reason for coming here is, I wasn't at your previous meeting, so I'm a little bit ignorant, but I've heard some scuttle in my neighborhood about, "Are they putting sidewalks on Samantha?" Wonderful. First from you. And that's, and that is good news. So that's a myth and a rumor. It's great news. But, um, and they, but they are putting in, on Samantha, they are putting in the, um...
Fire.
Optic-
Underground fire.
The under, okay. And I tried to mark where my underground fence is, hopefully they don't cut that. Also, is there a reason why they, they repaved Samantha Drive?
Good point. Because the condition, not so much up where your house is, but down the road, was in bad shape. It was in rough, um, with, uh, on our rating system to come out as highly as needed being done. We did the rest of it just to make it nice, smooth, seamless, all the way up the road.
Okay, and the reason I asked, um, you know, I was on the other side of town, and I've gone down some other roads, and they were a lot worse than, actually, they were a lot worse than Samantha. And of course, I've had other people say, "Why your street? When the other side of town had a lot, had streets that were a lot worse." And I wasn't able to answer their question, "Why my street, not theirs?" Anybody have a response?
Again, yeah, there is. Years ago, we had someone come through and did an objective study on the conditions of the streets, and deterioration rates, and so forth, and actually graded them, uh, which streets we should address first. So we put together like a five-year plan. And, uh, so I, it's a familiar refrain, because everyone says, "Why that street, why not this one?" But, uh, I wish we had, I think Councilman Gates said, "I wish we had a magic wand, we could do all of them at once." But we're trying to do the worst first, and it may not always appear that way. Sometimes the base is getting way, and that may not always be seen on top. But we are operating on an objective study that was done years ago, and with the input of council, just trying to, to come down through that list as they were rated to us.
Okay. When I ask that question, that's, that's where I'll get back. I don't know if that'll appease the folks on younger end of town.
Right. I wish we could do all of them at once. This is not possible.
And I, and I had also brought up to you, to, um, the Shelby Police about, about the coyotes. And I guess that there was, I guess that was being addressed.
Mr. Gates, so I did that second.
What's being done about the coyotes?
Mr. Gates.
Within the city limits.
Mayor, as you know, we have an ordinance that's up for second reading that would amend the prohibition against hunting that would allow, under the auspices of the chief of police, the hunting of nuisance species within the city limits. The Ohio Department, or the Division of Wildlife has determined that coyotes are a nuisance species.
So- I'm sorry, the coyotes are a what species?
Nuisance.
A nuisance, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's what we've got here. A piece of legislation trying to be proactive and not reactive.
Okay. And so they are going to... So they, they still cannot hunt them, but they, but they are going to maybe?
Well, well, first of all, I, I, I never guessed what my call, what a majority of council will do. It's had one reading. It's up for second reading tonight. There'll be a third reading and final passage. There's votes on each one of those. So, um, you know, we'll, we'll, ask me in about a month, and we'll know what's going to happen. But if it's passed by council, it goes into effect in 30 days. And again, under conditions specified by the police chief, he may allow hunting within the city limits.
For, for primarily just for the coyotes? Or for-
Well, it says, "Other nuisance species", so it's not just limited to coyotes.
Okay.
But coyotes would be included in that, uh, in that, uh, in that definition.
Okay. And, and my concern is that, uh, I've seen them, you know, right, you know, in my backyard, and, uh, not on, on two occasions. And of course, I have two small dogs, and at the end of my street, uh, right up against that same area, is, um, where a family lives, and they've got a swing set for little children. And of course, little children are going to assume that those are dogs. And they're not going to run, they're not going to run towards them. It's my, my thoughts.
Very likely.
You know, my concern is that, that they could be, you know, dangerous. There's ways of possibility. Chances aren't great. But then again, you can't predict what a lot of animal might do. So I do have a concern. And I don't want to lose one of the little dogs either.
Of course not.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you. Glad that you have addressed it. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And you may stay if you would like, or you're welcome to turn to your homes.
Thank you.
All right, any other public comment? All right, hearing the same number, we'll look forward to reports from standing and special committees, finance and personal committee, Councilman Gates.
Mayor, thank you very much. The committee met last Thursday afternoon, and we started with the financial statement. And we're going to take a look at the last page. The breakout on... We had done a quarter million dollars, and in June, it was 1.2 million dollars. The reason for that is we have a couple outliers. We have a significant business in town that made estimated payments on its income tax, and that boosted those up. The, uh, as of the end of August, we had collected $336,000. We met last week on the, uh, the 15th, uh, which was the day that any estimated, third-quarter estimates were to be in. The finance director said he would look to see if we got another outlier. And as I turned to him, and he will tell us whether, whether that happened in September.
Nothing yet, but they could have been mailed on the 15th, so...
Okay.
I'll keep you posted.
So anyway, you know, income tax is doing, doing very, very well. Uh, my colleague, Mr. Martin, had a question. At what point does outlier become the norm? You know, you know, once, twice is, you know, is the third time it, you know, who knows? But then again, you know, income tax, estimated income tax can go south. Uh, the other thing, of course, is, is, you know, their, their estimates may be very generous, but then when they do their actual return and file that in 2023, there could be a significant refund that's, that's owed. So that probably may answer Mr. Martin's question, is, when does it become the norm? Well, let's see what happens come, uh, April 15th of next year. Uh, let's head toward the front. We're going to look at the second page. And here again, is where we get the, uh, breakdown of the income tax, uh, individual business and withholding. Again, those figures, when you look at the, either compared to last year or the three, three-year average, they're all significantly higher. The, the business is so, so way out of line. Looking at those percentages, really, I don't think does any good. But, you know, withholding, which is the closest of the three we have to real time, is up 19-plus percent over the three-year average. You know, we'd love for that to be sustained, but, you know, we shall see. Let's turn to the front page. And, um, if, if you want to do a quick and dirty, if you look at the eight months out of the year, that's, uh, that's 67% of the year. If you look down at the bottom, we've brought in 75% of the income for the year and, um, spent 55% of the, uh, of estimated expenditures. Now, some of the reason why we're at that 75% figure again is that if we look at the general fund, where, um, you know, we've got, uh, cash of 2.8 million dollars, free and clear, uh, 2.7 million dollars. Two particular reasons for that. Again, is those income tax outliers. As they lend you the income tax, and then we're distributing to the various funds. The, the lion's share, of course, comes to the general fund. And we also have the, in the general fund, the monies formerly known as ARPA dollars were transferred out of the fund into which ARPA was received, and then was transferred into the general fund. So we've got a couple, uh, reasons why the general fund is so, uh, you know, so great as opposed to, uh, you know, even January 1st of this year. So good things there. We went down and, and I wrote down the quote from the finance director, "We're doing okay." I think actually we're doing better than okay, but, uh, if we look at, uh, health and PARP, they are both in healthy situations. Then we get down into the three utilities. Look at 300. Uh, again, the, that's, which is not a utility, but capital improvement. You can see there's, uh, encumbrances of $426,000. And that's because we have lots of work going on. So that, that explains that, as, as well it should be. Uh, free and clear, $62,000. Then we get down into the sewer fund, line 400. $106,000, $53,000 encumbered, free and clear, $52,000. Again, that's, we certainly wouldn't want that, that free and clear figure in the sewer fund to get any, any lower than what it is. We do, of course, we've, uh, you know, we, we can use all kinds of words. We adjusted the sewer rates, you know, that's true. We raised the sewer rates because we had done everything else in order to keep that fund in a healthy shape, and it wasn't working. So we did the, you know, it's the, the last resort of elected officials is to raise utility rates. I get that. But there comes a time when, when, after everything else has been done, that, that has to be done. It was modest increase, but we should see then in the next few months, I certainly hope, a healthier, free and clear balance in the sewer fund. Uh, we looked at the water. $247,000, $180,000 encumbered, and $66,000 free and clear. Of course, we, uh, the cost of chemicals has been increasing. The cost of chemicals has been increasing for decades, and then we add to it the inflationary trend that we've seen in the past year and a half or so, and it just compounds that. So, uh, trying to lock in chemical prices is what has been done. It's very prudent. We, there, there's, there's limit to what we can store, but we've got contracts for those, and the prices are there. And, uh, you know, that's the prudent thing to, to have done. Electric is, uh, uh, $4.9 million, and then with after encumbrances, uh, $3.6 million there. That, the encumbrance of 1.3, that of course, I'm sure is a, a monthly payment for purchase power. So, uh, hospitalization, almost the next to the last line, $423,000 there. You know, that's the kind of fund, it is what it is when, uh, when city employees or their families have procedures. You know, there, we, we get a bill for that. But that, that's still a healthy number. That's nothing to, to worry about. When we get down, I believe it's like $350,000 is, then we might want to, uh, gnash our teeth a little bit about, about that. So, uh, that's the first page. We're going to go on to the second page. Uh, I won't dwell too much on the comparisons. People can look to see that both, uh, the total budget and in the general fund revenues are exceeding expenditures. We looked right in the middle of the page. We see that the 101 general fund wages are a little over a million dollars. Last year, it was 1.9. The, the reason for that, that drop is that ARPA monies were used in lieu of general fund dollars for the police department and the fire department to the figure of $950,000. So if we added that $950,000 in there, you know, then, then we would be up, uh, this year for general fund wages. But, uh, ARPA monies were allowed, or I should maybe say that the monies formerly known as ARPA monies could be used for, uh, for such purposes, and the city wisely has done so. Looking at the third page, right in the middle, uh, I circled where it says "all funds". There, looking at the, uh, expenditures, wages, hospitalization, purchase power, and, uh, and the administrative costs. Wages are up 8%, um, and the others are down. So administrative costs are down 25% because we intentionally did that this year to drop, uh, some of the administrative charges. Next page is the cash investment reconciliation statement. Uh, if you look at the column, uh, right in the middle, PNC Bank, of course, that bank, uh, closed their local branch. The top part, uh, those are monies that we have invested. Those monies are still there. But if you look down at the bottom, where we have checking accounts, we have no checking accounts left at, uh, PNC. Those monies were moved to US Bank. And the, uh, when, when those investments that are in PNC come due, my, my guess is that the finance director, his ex officio treasurer, would want to move those to depositories that have offices within the corporate movements. Uh, as of the end of August, we had in the city treasury, a grand total of There's a small, uh, page there about the, uh, Soto Rousch Fund. It is, uh, it is ticking upward this year. That's the financial report. Included in our packets was a copy of Ohio Revised Code, section, uh, 5705.13, dealing with reserve balance accounts. The city, the finance committee has been talking, uh, about establishing a rainy day fund. Uh, that's the Revised Code section that allows that to be done. There are different, I'll say, different flavors, different purposes that one can establish a rainy day fund. It can be done for a specific project, or it can be done, uh, as the first thing says there, to stabilize budgets against cyclical changes in revenues and expenditures. The committee, I'm sure, will be looking at this more and, uh, probably coming to council at some point with, uh, legislation. Mayor, you gave a report regarding personnel. We have, uh, a new person starting in the line department, Nick Baxter. Elizabeth Fields will be starting as a new income tax clerk. Actually, she started, uh, today. We have a new person, Jayden Love, starting at the water treatment plant on the 26th. And we've had a resignation in the, uh, police department of Cody Baker as a patrolman as of, uh, the 25th of this month. Mayor, I believe that completes my report. If either, uh, Mr. Martin or the finance director have anything to add, by all means, I certainly should.
Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Gates in regard to his report? All right, now we'll, we should have more motion coming in.
Mayor, I move that the combined financial statement and the cash investment reconciliation statement, both dated the 31st of August of this year, be received, placed on file, and posted to the city website.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin that the combined financial statement and the cash investment reconciliation statement, both dated August 31st, 2022, be received, placed on file, and posted to the city website. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yes.
Mr. Robb?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
And motion passes. Thank you, Councilman Gates, for your report.
Mayor, you're very welcome.
We move now to the utilities and streets committee. Councilman Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. So the streets committee met on September 15th as well. And, uh, that pretty cool meeting, so I'm tracking through this, that's a hospital camp. Uh, first, we have a series, a long series of project updates. Uh, first, on the utilities billing software project, that bid opening was on July 15th. The total probable cost for the project was $85,000. Two people submitted bids, one for a little under $84,000 and one for over $86,000. And Continental Utility Solutions Incorporated, or QC, was awarded the bid at $83,757.80. Uh, virtual presentations were provided, and so the office staff were able to view the software specifications, ask questions, et cetera. Uh, it is user-friendly. Their support has a quick response time. And it offers an in-house merchant services contract as opposed to what we have now as a third-party payer. The service fees, uh, they, they go up or down depending. I'll explain that in a second. But the current merchant service fee is $495, flat regardless of your bill. So if you're paying a $50 bill, it's still $495. You're paying a $300 bill, it's still $495. Up to, uh, $400 is their maximum transaction amount. Uh, the service fee for the merchant services would be $1.95 or 2.25%, whichever is greater, uh, which is more beneficial to those with lower bills. Anybody above, uh, $220 would see a slight increase in those fees. But, uh, overall, it will be a lot more user-friendly and have better implementation. Uh, so we'll have more to come. Uh, the new conversion implementation training, the new software, would take about five, six months. More to come as, on this. I guess closer to launch. Washington street paving. Uh, the street has been milled three inches. The remaining concrete, around eight inches, is in really good condition. The milling depth removed most of the deteriorated concrete. Joints, uh, are going to be inspected before paving. Uh, the excellent base, uh, will be, uh, it's an excellent base right now to pave over. That paving is, uh, scheduled to be complete in the next few weeks. Uh, no date has been scheduled, but possibly sometime this week. It is a possibility. But no date has been scheduled. I was supposed to emphasize that. All right. Lead service line identification and location project. A lot of people have already reported this going around. We've had, uh, project notification letters were mailed to September utility bill. Receiving a good response from that. And then also, they're going out and, uh, doing home visits as well. And we are, as of now, still on track to have our GS, GIS map, um, provided to the Ohio EPA, which is a requirement by the end of 2023. So still on track with that project. The one-ton dump truck for the service department. In July of this year, oh, sorry, July of 2021, last year, the mayor authorized to go off for bid. Uh, we did a bid opening, and no bids were received. And so in September, last September, uh, it was authorized to purchase, uh, the Ford 4500 Series one-ton cab chassis truck from Dodge Ford. As of this September, that truck is still on order. Production date is still unknown. The original production date was supposed to be June. Uh, so the sales department is providing us monthly updates, but, uh, we're in a delay. Uh, our understanding is that these are, they do not have a wide margin on their profit margin. So that's why they're not being prioritized. And we're not the only people in this situation. But more info will come as it goes. Water meter replacement project. There are 390 water meters that still need to be replaced. Uh, as of May, it was 680. Uh, so we, uh, are on schedule to have those changed out by the end of the year. So we're still on schedule for that. And, uh, because of this project, time to read the water meters is down to less than a week. It used to take a full three weeks, if you so, so. It, the meter reading is assisting, uh, the meter reader is now assisting with that lead service line location identification project. Municipal bridge inspections. Bridge inspections are completed annually. Uh, ODOT has performed the bridge inspections in town over the last several years. Uh, that, those inspections were performed at no cost to us. The ODOT inspection program was set to end, uh, December 31st of this year. But available ODOT funding will allow the inspection program to continue through 2023. Uh, because of that, we have to execute legislation on that. And emergency legislation, so have prepared for this evening. All right, Mayor, colleagues. It's my favorite time of year. Salt purchasing agreement. All right. Richland County salt contract for the 2023 salting season has been awarded. We agreed to purchase 800 tons of salt. Contract reward was Morton Salt for $63.77. So it's no $23, but it's also no $123, so kind of, kind of in the middle of where we've been. Uh, the term for this contract is October 3rd to April 12th of next year. The term for this contract is October third to April twelfth of next year. Legislation is prepared for us tonight. Our salt bin is currently full, but it's supposed to be a doozy of a winter, as one had told, so. Anyways, there you have it. All right, upcoming projects. Ohio Public Works Commission project submission. We've actually had a pretty good track record with this one. And we've submitted South Street Storm Sewer Project for this. Substantial flooding occurs during heavy rains, streets, sidewalks, yards, property, et cetera. We are replacing six hundred and thirty feet of sewer pipe and the associated infrastructure. Engineer's estimate is one hundred and twenty thousand. The city's financial responsibility will be fifty percent of that, or sixty thousand, upon project approval by RCRP. So that legislation is prepared for us evening as well. And then the OPWC two thousand and twenty-two project will be the Broadway Sanitary Sewer Replacing Project. Easements are still needed, so the project coordinators work through the process and collect the necessary resources, my understanding, and those are necessary for the project before that can be solicited for competitive bids. And we're hoping how legislation can be worked out for us tonight, so we'll continue on that. All right. Storm sewer backups are occurring over on Mickey Road at the Shelby Industrial Warehouse Building. That current tenant is losing approximately fifteen thousand dollars of inventory every backup event. And so we are looking to essentially install a thirty-inch culvert under the railway to replace a eighteen-inch culvert. So everyone got the things, you can look at all the nice little pictures and everything. The down journey on this is going to be around twenty-five thousand dollars-ish because we don't know what the estimated cost for the contract will be completed. So we're collecting quotes and are preparing for that legislation, and that will be coming here soon. Wareham Road at Storm Sewer, so we were able to see a lovely video of a massive flooding event over that road. This one's a little tricky because it involves, obviously, part city limits and part Jackson Township. So we're working through, working through the ownership fifty-fifty of the project with Jackson Township. The engineer's estimate on that is around forty-five thousand dollars. In essence, we're going to be widening a ditch, moving an eighteen-inch culvert to a thirty-inch culvert to, on the other side of the road, helping direct backwater a little better out of the field. And again, the video and all the attachments were sent out to City Council, so. All right, trimming of trees. Right now, under the current ordinances, it requires the Superintendent of Streets and Sewers to issue a written letter to property owners with overgrown trees, shrubs interfere with street trees, ambushes. Well, that's all well and good, but now we have a code enforcement officer. So we are going to, we're going to be looking to revise the language to also add the addition that the code enforcement officer can also submit those letters, so make good use of what we've done and help out the superintendent of Streets and Sewers. So there's that. All right. Chemicals, water treatment chemical costs. Obviously, those, we are projected currently to be about ninety-seven thousand dollars short in that line item. That's the, I think it's the twenty-thousand-foot view. We've transferred here, there to try to cover for that, but we're really facing to try to meet about an additional sixty thousand dollar gap. So option one is to take that out of the fund balance and just appropriate that out of the fund balance. Well, we saw the report, that would put us dangerously low after incomparances in the sewer, sorry, the water fund, and that's not the position we want to be in. Option two would be to utilize ARPA funds. ARPA funds were designed to replace lost revenues in water and sewer utilities, and the water fund itself lost around ninety thousand dollars. So to use sixty thousand in ARPA funds would meet that, and it would keep the struggling fund balance in a better financial streak. Chemicals are part of the PCA adjuster, but that's always a lagging. And so initially, these numbers were given us to get us through the end of the year. But again, the PCA adjuster won't go into effect until March, so we'll probably have to do an adjustment to put a little bit more in to get us through to March when the PCA adjuster kicks in. And that will prevent us from having to do, well, anything else to make up the shortfall in that line item. So Mr. Ensmann did a lot of work on showing the chemical costs historically, as well as a percentage change for the chemicals year over year. This is just a price sheet change from January of this year to August of this year. So for one of them, it's ten-point-eight-seven percent increase, almost eleven percent increase. Another one's twenty-one percent increase. One of the major ones we use is a twenty-seven percent increase. One is fourteen, one's about thirteen, twelve, and one is a thirty-one-point-two-four percent increase. That's what we're facing with chemicals just this year, just from January to August. And there's no end in sight really of those going up. So probably we'll see some legislation to the effect or to how to utilize those funds. And Minister Ensmann also put together quite a few graphs and stuff. I would encourage all my fellow council members to look at those, and they're very There are some things that we're doing to try to do cost savings, and so as a discussion point, there are two options that we're looking at. One is to research whether we need to actually use lime to soften our water. Lime is used to soften water, and obviously, we've softened our water because we used to get our water from wells. Well, we don't, we don't do that at all right now. So the question is, do we even need to soften our water? There are several communities around us who do not. Lime costs us a lot of money, around a hundred thousand dollars per year just to soften the water. Fifty thousand of that's for the lime sledge removal. So the other piece of that is lime is very finicky, so it's very, very easy to screw up the balances in our water supply if someone doesn't know what they're doing. So it requires an additional expertise, which also opens us up to additional risk. So the question is, is it worth the risk? So we're not, we're not saying one way or another, but we are going to explore what that looks like, and we actually do need to do the lime softening. Now, it does not mean that we will all of a sudden have hard water, it just means that it won't be necessarily as soft, but it might be naturally soft, so further research needs to be done on that. But it would save a great amount for the lime cost. Option number two is to solicit chemicals for a competitive bid. The term of the contract could influence cost one year versus three-year. It is not going to be a save-all-for-inflation, though, or a hedge against inflation, because every contract requires language that allows inflationary increase. So it's not as someone's going to enter a three-year contract and take a bath, you know, doing business for us, that's not, but it could be a cost-saving thing. And one thing we had discussed in the committee is that we're not the only community around here who needs to get these chemicals. Maybe we could enter into a competitive bid with surrounding communities. Now, we don't use all the same chemicals. Our, our use of chemicals is very specific to our needs, et cetera, but there are, there are not overlapping chemicals. Or having some kind of co-op with the surrounding communities could be of great benefit, especially if the trend increases or chemical increases. So those are things we're exploring, again, to try to bring those rising costs down as best we can. In that, I would like to, once again, commend Mr. Ensmann for always, he's always trying to be proactive in cost cutting. He's never satisfied just to raise rates or just to do a fix with ARPA money or anything like that. He's always looking about the future, how can we bring the cost down and save, save money with the utilities? He deserves a lot of credit for that. It is, I think we take it for granted, and it's something that, in talking to other municipalities and folks who run their utilities, it is something we for sure should not take for granted. And so, Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you, Councilman Martin, and if there may be any questions or comments in regard to Councilman Martin's report. Mr. Gates.
I certainly like the idea about doing some sort of cooperative purchasing for chemicals. I mean, we have a piece of legislation a year later where we've done cooperative purchasing for road salt. So the model exists. I think it's just a matter of lining up the players and, and going from there.
Yeah, good point. All right, well, let's move on to Safety Committee. Councilman Roberts.
Thank you, sir. We met on the seventh of September, very shortly. In fire news, chief doctor reported all the hydro flushing had been done, and hydro painting had begun before. Everybody knows we start from one and go each year and this year before, and then next year we'll be start back at one. Parts come in for a ladder thirty-seven, the repair will start, and we try to keep this truck out of service for as short a period of time as possible, so that's why we're waiting on parts. I want to get it over there, and then have the parts come in in sections, so we'll get all the parts together, and then we will send it over there and see if we can put everything on, so we can get it back as quickly as we can. One of the biggest ladders in the area, so we keep that truck. Health news, we did, we did receive our accreditation, and we're the smallest health department in the nation to receive that accreditation, so that's, that's kind of unique. We had two new, there are two nuisance cases with the law director, and we had our first West Nile positive mosquito pool, which was near where we trap, near Veterans Park. So just something I, the kids were out in the backyard the day of that, of our meeting, and I told my wife on the way home, I said, we live near Veterans Park, I said, make sure we're soaking them down with bug spray, because we don't want, we don't want that. So, and the only, the only piece of information we got from police news is the jail is open, and that hadn't been, that hadn't been for a while, so my report.
Thank you, Councilman Roberts. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Roberts in regard to his report? Hearing none, we'll move forward then to reports of city officials. I'll give the mayor's report briefly. Of course, he's been engaged in most of the managerial activities over the last couple of weeks. On September the sixth, I presided over and participated in our Shelby Board of Health meeting, and glad to say that things are looking well in our health department. September the eighth, we had the groundbreaking ceremony at the Black Fort Collins, a very special event, and we had folks from all over the county there, which was, it was a grand affair. September the ninth, I attended the Shelby Historic Preservation Commission meeting. On September the thirteenth, Mr. Ensmann arranged a meeting with city officials to meet with the Omni Fiber officials as they outlined the rollout of their internet access network in Shelby. And I noticed when I came in, they were working right across the street here from the Justice Center, so they are, they're just really busting out all across town here with the pole-to-pole, and again, you see the lines over where the underground will be, they're making a really good time, according to the Omni Fiber officials, and we received a mailing today in our household in regard to Omni Fiber. So I'm, I'm very focused to read about it and be educated, and let's see where this takes us. On September fourteenth, I attended the Richland County Planning Commission Executive meeting in Mansfield. And then on September sixteenth, had a ribbon-cutting event for the Dove Candle Bar at forty-five West Main Street. Another nice downtown business and an activity that if you want to create your own scented candle, that's the place to be, so. That's my report for this evening. Are there any comments or questions for me? All right, hearing none, move forward then to Mr. Crum, our Director of Finance.
Thank you, sir. Mostly routine business around my department, and Councilman Gates did a fabulous job with all the number stuff. Really, the only exciting thing is Ms. Fields did start today, so please feel free to stop by and say hello to her in the tax department. I think it's going to work out really well, and we're really excited to have her. That's your call.
Thank you, Mr. Crum. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Crum? All right, very good, thank you, sir. Mr. Ister, Law Director.
Thank you, Mayor. No real news from my office, no report.
No news, a good legal, but down on the record. All right, we'll move forward then to Mr. Gates, Project Coordinator.
Thank you, Mayor. Our downtown streets game project does continue, as you've been notified before, October third is the closure of Main Street from High School Avenue to Washington Street. They will totally redo that whole intersection of High School Avenue and the main crosswalk. Thirty-day schedule, like, don't think it's going to take that long, but that's what we set up in the plan, is that we will get that open as soon as possible. So working with Jessica, who already notified all the businesses, and we'll try to do some extra signing if needed. We're always the ones that say, oh, the local businesses, so we really want to keep them going and so forth, and try to, we will try to make this quick, so. Our paving project is continuing on, they're finishing up with adjusting all the main hole of water around and so forth, and Black Fort Collins should start later this month. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Geis, any comments or questions for Mr. Geis in regard to his report? Hearing none, we'll move forward to new business, any new business to report for council this Hearing none, we'll move forward then to unfinished business, the former high-spine property, nothing new to report this evening, hopefully sometime soon. Any other unfinished business? Hearing none, let's move forward to later session, Mr. Crum.
Ordinance number seventeen, two thousand and twenty-two, amending section six hundred forty-two, one-one-five, placing signs with chapter six hundred and forty-two, offenses relating to property with the codified ordinances of the city of Shelby, Ohio.
Mr. Ister. Second. We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Martin for the third reading of Orders Number Seventeen, two thousand and twenty-two, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin.
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yeah.
Mr. Robb.
Yeah.
Mr. Gates.
Yeah.
Orders Number Seventeen, two thousand and twenty-two, passes its third reading.
Will the ordinance be taken up and passed? Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts for the passage of Orders Number Seventeen, two thousand and twenty-two, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin.
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yeah.
Mr. Robb.
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts.
Yeah.
Mr. Gates.
Yeah.
Orders Number Seventeen, two thousand and twenty-two, passes.
Ordinance number twenty, two thousand and twenty-two, amending section six hundred eighteen, point one-two, hunting prohibited of chapter six hundred and eighteen animals of the codified ordinances of the city of Shelby.
Move for a second reading. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts for the second reading of Orders Number Twenty, two thousand and twenty-two, discussion? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, immediately after the last council meeting, the law, excuse me, law director came up to me with three very, very cogent suggestions for amending the ordinance. I typed those up, I passed those out on slips. Uh, I typed those up, I passed those out on slips. Um, the first one is, uh, where originally it says, or even actually right now, it says nuisance animals. His suggestion is change animals to species to be consistent with the whereas paragraph up above. Uh, and, uh, the determination of a, uh, what is a nuisance species is determined by the High Division of Wildlife. His suggestion is to add on and/or the chief of police. You know, if, if we're looking for, uh, a correct and a quick decision, we can get one from the ch, police chief much quicker than we can get one from, uh, the folks at Division of Wildlife. And, uh, the third suggestion he had was that this, uh, ordinance should be cross-referenced to, uh, the ordinance about, uh, discharging firearms inside the city. And so that's why it, uh, it says the last sentence there, "No person so authorized shall be charged for the violation of codified ordinance section six seventy-eight point oh-nine A." So, uh, Mayor, I move that the ordinance be amended to read as, uh, on the slip of paper.
Second.
We have a motion on Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts that this ordinance, um, this is section A in parentheses, be amended as per the paper that's been distributed. And if I may ask a question, I think I have it right here. We, so we have a striking of the word animals, and then anything in, uh, all caps is the amended language. Is that correct, adjusted language?
That, that's correct, Mayor, that's the, that's the new language.
That's, it makes a plan, so thank you. All right, so, uh, that motion is on the table to amend as per the, uh, the paper before you. Uh, discussion on the amendment. We'll take a roll call on the motion to amend.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Rob?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Mr. Gates?
Yea.
The motion to amend passes. And further discussion on order number twenty, two thousand twenty-two. Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Rob?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Mr. Gates?
Yea.
Orders number twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two passes. I'm, I'm sorry, passes as second reading.
Resolution number forty-nine, two thousand twenty-two, authorizing the mayor as director of public service to purchase a two thousand twenty-two Ford Escape SD all-wheel drive from Dodling Ford of Shelby for the operation of the health department.
Will the resolution be taken up and passed? Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. McLaughlin for the passage of resolution number forty-nine, two thousand twenty-two, discussion? Uh, Mr. Roberts?
I would like to ask the mayor, if you have a very good explanation for this?
Yes, I think most of you know our escape that Eden uses, our vehicle for the health department, was actually unfortunately totaled within an accident incident in the city of Shelby. And so we were about a, um, a vehicle for the health department. We, uh, did seek to get some other quotes here, some comparative vehicles. We also did reach out to, uh, the Chevy dealership in town, but they did not have an equivalent to get a quote here in town. So that's why you see the long amount of town. So these were equivalent vehicles, but, um, it, it seems that, uh, Dodling Ford is able to use that fleet pricing, which gives them a little bit of edge. And, uh, this is a two thousand twenty-two, uh, we feel it's a vehicle that would be, uh, our designated sort of out-of-town vehicle. So when someone needs to go to an AMP conference or something of that nature, they can take this vehicle with confidence, it'd kind of be that, that go-to. And, uh, but the modus operandi, we should, this should last us for many, many years. Hope that's, that's right. Any further discussion? Mr. Gates?
Mayor, the, the health department is really under the Department of Public Safety, so I would ask unanimous consent that the term "public sa," public service be changed to "public safety" in the title, in the, uh, third whereas paragraph, and in section one.
You've heard the request by unanimous consent to change, uh, the wording from "public, uh, service" to "public safety" in the heading, and also in the, the third whereas, uh, the director of public, uh, safety instead of service, and then in section one, the director of public safety instead of public service. Are there any objections? There are no objections, that, that those changes will be made. Thank you for that observation. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Rob?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Mr. Gates?
Yea.
Resolution number forty-nine, two thousand twenty-two passes.
Resolution number fifty, two thousand twenty-two, authorizing the mayor as director of public service to purchase salt from Morton's Salt in conjunction with the Richland County Board of Commissioners for the purchase of rock salt and declaring emergency.
Will the resolution be taken up and passed?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. McLaughlin for the passage of resolution number fifty, two thousand twenty-two, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Rob?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Mr. Gates?
Yea.
Resolution number fifty, two thousand twenty-two passes.
Resolution number fifty-one, two thousand twenty-two, giving consent authorization to the Director of Transportation in the state of Ohio to complete bridge inspection services, PID one-one-seven-five-five-four, within the City of Shelby, Ohio, and declaring emergency.
Will the resolution be taken up and passed?
Second.
We have a motion on Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin for the passage of resolution number fifty-one, two thousand twenty-two, discussion? Mr. Gates?
This is, uh, like Mr. Martin said earlier, this is, um, for them to inspect our bridges, and if we don't choose to have them inspect our bridges, we have to pay someone to do it and submit it to them, so. They hire a consultant, that information is what is included, and what is sent out to consultants to, uh, bring it back to, go it out for that, so. We'll also know that, note that, um, District Three has been working with our school district, uh, to have their bridges inspected also through this program, so, it's very different.
Mr. Roberts?
Is that, the, the bridge, the, the walking bridge from Central School, is that included in a, in a school system bridge? Or is that a, something that, uh?
Mr.?
That one has always been private.
Okay, hey, let somebody ask that question, thank you.
Yeah, so the new bridges out at, uh, I guess you can't call it just high school, I think I call it everything now, ones that go over, um, Arden Barkers or Dish.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Rob?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Mr. Gates?
Resolution number fifty-one, two thousand twenty-two passes.
Resolution number fifty-two, two thousand twenty-two, authorizing the mayor as director of public service to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission, state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs, and to execute contracts as required for the City of Shelby South Street Storm Sewer Replacement Project.
Will the resolution be taken up and passed?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts for the passage of resolution fifty-two, two thousand twenty-two, discussion? Mr. Gates?
Our annual submission, um, as, uh, as noted before, there's been some damage with, uh, the drains are just gone, they drain down into the woods down there by Tubular, and our service department has tried many times to get them cleaned out, and it's, it's just past, uh, past its time. So, uh, the city will be over at the, um, Regional Planning Commission, full commission meeting in October, present the, uh, project if approved by Council this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Uh, Gates?
Mayor, I'm looking at the, uh, the Chief Financial Officer's certification of local funds inside the back page, and it has the right dollar amounts, but it makes reference to the Broadway Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project.
Mr. Gates?
That's because Mr. Gates forgot to change down, uh, from every use last year, so.
So this should be, what, what would it place in there, the, the South Street?
What, how did it, the South Street Storm Sewer Replacement Project?
South Street, storm sewer, replacement? Project, all projects in there. All right, ever make that? Someone gets an Eli award again, I don't know who it might be.
Well, Mayor, I expect a little something extra in my pay. Of course, I can expect it all, I won't fail.
Yeah. Yeah. Unrealistic expectation proves frustration. All right.
I'm good.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Rob?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Mr. Gates?
Yea.
Resolution number fifty-two, two thousand twenty-two passes.
Resolution number fifty-three, two thousand twenty-two, authorizing the mayor as director of public service to acquire rights of easement for the Broadway Sanitary Sewer Project and declaring emergency.
Will the resolution be taken up and passed?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin for the passage of resolution number fifty-three, two thousand twenty-two, discussion? Mr. Gates?
Um, this is, we're, we're behind on getting this project out. A lot of it was, was getting the plans done. Um, there is existing sewer lines there, it was installed early nineteen hundreds. Went back into our box of easements, did not find anything for that area. So we had discussions with the law director about do we, or do we not have an easement with, or script or whatever. And his suggestion was to, let's just get an easement from everyone, and be on the up and up, and we're all good to go. Um, we had to design a project based on years of different sheds and or garages that made them built on top of the sewer. There had to be a little bit of changes from the old lines, so this new survey that you see there will, uh, have the new layout, um, lending to, to council to put this out of bids. We want to get the, uh, easements first, obviously. Um, a little different than what we've normally done. Um, this is because you can see the, this is like a, there's eighteen of them. So each one of these property owners will have an easement, just, just like this. Uh, Mr. Soder got with, um, this keeper over at the tax map office, and came up with this idea, ODOT uses it a lot when they get a lot of easements and so forth for different projects. So we can, a lot of these property owners are out of, some out of, definitely out of city, some out of state, so this would give us, uh, the mail back, and they could have their notary from their other state sign this, and then we would have these easements ready to go, so. That is these two here.
Thank you, Mr. Gates. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Rob?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Mr. Gates?
Yea.
Resolution number fifty-three, two thousand twenty-two passes. Come to miscellaneous business, is there any miscellaneous business that we brought before Council this evening? Mr. Gates?
Mayor, I shall be representing the city in the AMP conference next week.
Well, thank you. Any other miscellaneous business? Mr. Gates?
Mayor, I'm the Council of Germans.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin for adjournment, roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Rob?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Mr. Gates?
Council of Germans at eight oh-three. We got a tailwind, we got a tailwind this morning. That's all members for making it without a five-minute break.